With the first hurdle being identifying those students who are on SNAP benefits, and then encouraging them to take advantage of the funding that this bill outlines.
Is, if I can name it up?
Yeah.
Is that the primary issue? Is it students aren't aware of it, or community colleges haven't gone after the students?
Well, I can't speak for the students at this point, but even if I could, I would tell you that the blame rests with community colleges. We weren't aware of this funding. It was made, someone asked me, "Why aren't you doing this?" I didn't have a good answer, and I went to look at it. And we worked with the mayor's office in Detroit, who has figured it out, and actually has started discussing with us ways to give us funding to incentivize us to get engaged in that. So this, up until we started looking at this, it was our fault.
Are there, no students have inquired about it or anything? I'm just kind of surprised.
Yeah, I was surprised too, trustee McDonald. Another surprising fact on that is that the legislation that funds this, I believe they funded to $60 million per year, I believe. I'm not sure about that. But I think each of the years that it has been funded, which I believe is now, we're in our fifth year, the $60 million has not been, has not been fully used across the country. So this is something that, we should know about it. We should do better. But our ignorance is not, we're not alone in our ignorance. And our ignorance is gone now, and we're working hard to try to get at least an initial cadre to use those funds for the summer class load, and certainly ramp it up for the fall class load.
So do we have something in place as an identifier for them yet, or no?
No, and so that's what, that's what John Setkowski's staff is looking at now. And I suspect what will, what I'll probably eventually report to you is that we start screening them at the intake level. But in the back, in the meantime, we've got to kind of look backwards of our current student populace to ask, and I'll be candid with you, one of the things we're kind of trying to tinker with is, historically, there have been stigma associated with being on this type of benefit program. And so people don't necessarily, I'm assuming, and I could be wrong about this, but people may not have been eager to say, "By the way, I'm on SNAP benefits. Can you pay for my college?" But the first step is going to be identifying those students who are currently with us that are SNAP eligible. And what I've learned now is there are a lot of students, and particularly students who have children, who are SNAP eligible, that don't have any idea of the wide panoply of support mechanisms that exist in addition to SNAP benefits.
I would think a simple mechanism would be as they, as they come in and apply for school, that we would be identifying them if they're coming in looking for any kind of financial support of any kind, that we just have something we can hand out, or even a poster on the wall identifying, if you're, you know, if you qualify for these, ask us or something. I mean, it could be as simple as that, just to start the ball rolling.
Yeah, I think-
I don't think it needs to be a real complicated setup.
I think you're right. The trick is, we started ramping this up in the middle of a term, so we haven't even had the opportunity to ramp it up as we enroll a term. And so now we're doing a look back on those students who are already enrolled. As we move into new terms, I think that that type of intuitive process will be what we'll implement. And the good news is, other states have figured this out, and they have offered their consulting acumen to us, either free or supported by the mayor's office.
Okay, thank you.
While I was gone, I want to say thank you to Vice President Daniel Herbst, who was kind of my main resource on campus, and he, when I came back, he said something to the effect of, "You can have your job back now."
You don't like the snow days?
So, but, but, you know, Daniel Herbst served admirably, and I appreciate his support. And of course, I know that Daniel got the benefit of, well, I get the benefit all the time, and that is relying on Kathy Dimitriou and her help. So she had to serve two presidents, one from afar and one here, and I appreciate both of them very, very much. Our, a student did note that I was on the bench, however, during a basketball game, and however, trustee Thorpe was there with me, so he deserves as much credit as I deserve, which is probably zero.
I agree with that.
And that was a nice tailgate event that Rochelle Taylor and Daniel Herbst and the culinary department put together. And I saw staff, I saw students, we had a really good basketball game, and I was proud to be associated with that event. You may recall that, that was a redo from an event that several of you had attended-
Yes, unfortunately conflicted with my Federation of Neighborhood Associations meeting.
Yeah.
I was sitting with the mayor that night.
Yes, so we did get it done, but it was, it was unfortunate that we had to change the date. Some of you have seen, we have passed out and mailed invitations to the collage concert that is this weekend, February 23rd at 7:00 PM. It is in the Michael Guido Theater at the Ford Community and Performing Arts Center here in Dearborn. We are excited about this event. It's a historical event here. I, I have invited several of my associates and friends who are not from Dearborn, with best hopes that I'll attract some folks to hear good entertainment and see the friendly confines of our city. And Kathy Dimitriou, like almost everything in the president's office, put this together with the help of the printing office and did a fantastic job. The last, yes?
I just want to say, there was, and I don't remember what document, somewhere I saw that the concert started at 8:00. I went online and double-checked, and it does start at 7:00, at least according to the website of the Performing Arts Center. But I know there's a conflict out there, so I don't know if you just want to let people know that they're coming, that it does start at 7:00.
Well, I appreciate you saying that. Why don't we, why don't we chat after the meeting?
Okay.
Maybe you can help me find where it's, where that may be.
Okay, I will have to go with it.
And if not-
But I don't remember. I just remember, I saw it, I had it in my head, that it was 8:00.
Okay.
And then I found out it wasn't.
Okay. At the very least, we can, we can make social media outreach on the point.
Yeah, make sure everybody's aware.
And to those of you who are able to attend, we'll be excited to see you. Finally, you may have seen in your email that on Tuesday, during and around the time John Dingell's funeral was happening, we had an event of freezing rain, and I, I elected to keep the school open at the beginning of the morning, and then elected to close the school towards the end of the morning, and that engendered a lot of feedback, such that I quickly put a statement out, both in writing and via video, inviting more feedback on my decisions and the process that we undertook. And I got exactly what I asked for. Which is, and I've walked around campus since, and anyone who's given me feedback, I've been, I've honored my request. Between Daniel Herbst and Rhonda DeLonge and Kathy Dimitriou and myself, I think we're probably north of 200 contacts. And I responded every single one of them, because I believe that's what we should do as a service-oriented college. I don't agree with every comment, but certainly every comment deserves the dignity of a response, and, and we're still doing that. But it's also start, engendered a good discussion about what our, what our closure procedure should be, and the cabinet will be going through that, just to make sure that we have the procedure that best fits what our students' needs are and our staff needs are. Because I was able to glean a lot of feedback on the processes we're going through. So to the extent you all, as trustees, hear feedback, I'd be happy to hear it, positive or negative. And just anecdotally, I'll tell you, I would say, a healthy minority said, "You should never close, and you should stay open more often." And a small but a significant majority said, "You should have closed more quickly." And we're, we're going to review whether we can improve on our processes, and I wanted you all to know that.
My assumption is going to be, because most of the comments I read are coming from high school students who are dual-enrolled, so when you have the conflict of the P-12 being closed, but they're still being asked to come to classes, is where you get a lot of negative commentary, from what I could glean. It's, it's hard to tell who all are commenting. But the way it was presented sounded as a less mature comments that were coming through. Since we are unique in the fact that we have so many students who are also in the high school system, and we, and we share this responsibility, I guess that is going to be something that we're going to be challenged with, because quite frankly, we also have adults who have nothing to do with the high school and, and have maybe a different outlook on having, they have to go to work, they have to do this and that, and they don't necessarily have the same kind of sentiments about closing a college. It's, for them, it's an adult world. So I guess the messaging might have to be tailored to the student body that we serve, which, which is going to be a little bit more of a differentiated approach, I guess. I don't know.
Yeah, well, I take all your input seriously, Madam Chair, and we, as a team, will continue to think about ways to communicate the decisions we make, and I'll always invite feedback from the board here. The last thing I'll say is, if you do read Cranes Detroit, you would have seen a very long article on the enrollment issues facing universities and community colleges, and you would have seen some really well-put-together quotes from Vice President Michael Nealan. And I think that, I think those quotes were given on Friday. It was interesting, the publication contacted us, and I think gave us maybe two or three hours to get back to them on a quote, and I was unable to make that happen. Vice President Nealan jumped in and represented the institution well, and it's a good article. It summarizes a lot of what we've been talking about as a board, on the issues facing universities and community colleges regarding enrollment. If you haven't had a chance to see it, I'll be happy to forward it to you. I think you'll, you'll see and agree with me that Vice President Nealan made us all proud in his, in his comments, and that we've got serious, as other higher education institutions are dealing with, we've got serious challenges ahead, and we're looking them straight in the eye. So that's my, my president's comments, and I'll take any questions if you have any.
All right. Next item, please.
Action items, citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who have submitted a blue card to the secretary, may speak at this time. I have no blue cards.
Now, what about discussion items?
This is an updated version.
Oh, okay.
Next item, special consideration of an action item. Are there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we exclude these from the action below.
Does anybody have any? All right then.
I have one question. Does the, I don't think the naming requires a roll call. That was, does it require a roll call? That was my question.
All right.
Please make the motion.
Move to approve action items numbered one through nine as recommended in this agenda.
So moved?
Support. All those in favor? Say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, please attach a you in this role. Next item, please.
Do I have to read through all these like we do at the P-12 side?
No.
Oh, thank goodness. Okay, give me a second. Where are we? Can we jump all the way then to board of trustees business?
Yep.
Am I missing something? All right.
So I take it discussion items is gone?
Again, that's my error. We went back and forth whether there was going to be a policy committee because he may not be here. But if Roxanne could update us under board committee reports?
That was my plan.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's what we would do with anything.
All right. First, acknowledgement of correspondence. I don't think I received anything.
No.
Next would be board and committee reports.
Okay. The policy committee did just meet prior to this meeting. We discussed, there was a change in the law about residency for veterans, and that they, they need to be given the in-district or in-state rate, and not the out-of-state rate. So to comply with that, not only, it's, it's the right thing to do, but there aren't that many veterans that really were affected by the situation. So we discussed that. We will also have to, that was for residency. There will be basically the same type of change done at the next meeting for tuition. And it's the exact same changes, but it just falls into a different category, so we'll discuss that at the next meeting. But that was basically it. It was a quick 10-minute meeting.
Yes, so what we were, what it was, was to make sure that any of the veterans, any of the groups that fall under this category, would not get out-of-state tuition.
Right.
They would get in-state, but out of district.
Unless they were in district.
Unless they were within district.
Yeah.
And a fair number of them fall to within district the following semester.
Right. And we also discussed, and we are going to add survivors and-
Children.
Independents.
Yes.
Or dependents, I'm sorry. Dependents and survivors into that category, again, because it's the right thing to do, and it is a small-
Okay. Trustee Lane had a question.
Oh, I'm checking.
Well, no, 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 are you done?
Yes.
Because I, I had some suggestions for the committee, so.
Sure.
I, I thought we were going to be discussing it, so I, I understood that the point is to make sure that we don't, that we're in compliance with 38 USC, I guess.
Mm-hmm, right.
And, you know, nobody wants to discriminate against veterans, of course. I just, my, I, I mean, this immediately raised my hackles, because it's got some immigration law language in there. And I work with quite a few immigrants, refugees, and then people who are sometimes what used to be called permanently residing under color of law. So they're here legally, but with all of the changes after 9/11, it's very difficult for, for agencies like Secretary of State, or the college, or anybody, to recognize who's authorized to work, who's authorized to be resident, how they get their driver's license, state ID. So I, I have a Cuban gentleman that has applied for permanent residence, but those processes take so long now, that I didn't want, I don't want the policy to stymie, and, and maybe in another community, it wouldn't be such an issue, but we have a large number of people who might be under deferred enforced departure, or temporary protected status. So I don't even know how to, to put all of that in. I know some of the language in the proposed policy like that, that references immigration and naturalization services, that's outdated. It's, it's now ICE, CBP, and citizenship and immigration. So the, I, I was going to suggest either that the language be changed to may show these documents, and then there's a list of documents, but for the documents that can be shown, quite a few of them are car-dependent. So if you're someone that doesn't have a car, you wouldn't have some of these. Or if you're somebody that's waiting to get a car. So I just don't want this policy to get in the way of people who might be eligible students. And I know that this Cuban that I'm assisting, I mean, being without documents in this country, even though you've been admitted by the US government, is very frustrating. It's like you don't exist. And you can't, everything is tied up. Until then, what do you do to live? So I, I would like if someplace it can say, "Some documents that may be submitted," as long as it's not in violation of the federal law. Or another solution might be to say, "Or other persons residing legally in the United States." We have it specifically stating refugees, Asiles, lawful permanent residents. And, and there's got to be some way to craft it so that it's, doesn't shut down people who haven't gotten documents yet.
Well, I guess we would have to see how it fits with the letter of the law in the wording.
Yeah, the other thing is, I think Jocelyn Benson's office may be changing, and maybe she could be asked for an opinion about that, on their issuance of state IDs. So those are my concerns for the committee.
Okay.
I mean, I can send you a list of those, or, you know.
Send me a list, but-
Okay.
And to be in compliance with the VA, or the VA portion of this, there is a deadline of March 1st on that.
And they're giving us an extension based on our board meetings.
The meeting, yes.
Well, I suspect that we could always go back and revisit it down the road, if, if we, if we want to make sure that we're up to date right now, and then if we need to amend it.
Yeah, I mean, we can't violate the US Code.
Right.
I mean, if they tell us, "You have, this is the language you have to have." Now, they did suggest that we could just put in this sentence, and I, I thought the sentence that they suggested was less restrictive than our policy.
Who suggested it?
Michigan office, a state approving agency. They have-
And I've read all of that, too.
Yeah, they're, well, I, yeah, like I say, I mean, I've got kind of my notes all over the place, but there was, they had some proposed language, maybe it's on the back page of this. Maybe it's in here.
Yeah.
Alternate policy language, so. I, I don't know. My only concern is this. I don't want to hold up the policy, obviously, they told us a deadline, but I'm concerned that we deny people an opportunity for education, potentially, that we consider entitled for.
Still have, have that conversation.
Right. So I would pass it on to the policy committee.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, trustee McDonald, I can get you, I've taken notes about what trustee Lane has raised.
Okay.
I can get you a thoughtful response to avenues to meet her needs and, and the regulatory needs, and that can help you and your committee decide how to brief this, this board at its next meeting.
Okay, that's perfect. As long as we're in compliance and we're able to go forward with the-
Take away, yes.
That have been proposed.
Any other committee reports?
Yes, trustee Lane.
I'm not reporting for a committee, but I know that we have established this security committee, so I had a couple of suggestions for things that I'd let the security committee do.
I don't know if it's exactly a committee, it's-
A task force, or, I don't know. What, what are you?
Well, a committee is usually three, and we specifically just wanted two members.
No, but the, the whole-
The whole thing?
The whole, the whole thing is, is not, it's not just the board-
No.
-involved. We're just there to help represent the board's vision.
Okay.
I can brief, I can brief the board on it now. I can take trustee Lane's concerns and put them in the work that we're doing now. I'm happy to take-
Have they met?
We did meet this afternoon.
Okay.
And I can, I can take any direction you all have about how to report that out.
Well, we weren't really at a place to do any major reporting. We're, we are kind of at processing now, or process how we're going to. So, yeah, if you could share your information, we can include it in when we're going forward, your questions that you have.
Sure. Do you want me to put that in an email, or do you want me to bring them up now?
It, it might be easier, since they haven't established the whole, maybe if you put it, put it together.
We basically had a conversation of where we're headed, is where we are now, is what we did at the other meeting.
If it's in writing, it's, it'll be preserved.
Yeah.
And, and that way, they'll be able to reference it, and, and there won't be any misunderstanding. So I think that would probably be a better way to handle it at this point, since they're not ready yet to move forward.
Okay, that's fine with me. I just want to be sure that, that the review by the security task force or committee includes, I mean, all points of view.
Yeah.
And I mean by that, for example, not just how many guns do we need, but what effects does trauma have on, what effects does violence have on people? Are there ways to mitigate? I personally feel, in the future, since we've got $50 billion industry and insecurity, we should include in that, not just are we registering guns and other weapons properly, but are there ways that we can reduce, reduce the amount of violence, reduce the number of weapons that are around, reduce the number of, of weapons that get stolen, or are there other ways that we can encourage nonviolence and other solutions to our addiction to weapons? So.
Okay, so you're looking at a broader scope.
I'm looking at it broadly, and another thing is, I'd like to have the committee be composed broadly also. I don't know, I, I don't remember-
Yeah, I don't know either.
Whether there are students on the committee. I have been seeing, in what I've been reading, concerns of, you know, the anniversary of Parkland was, was just celebrated or passed, and students there are expressing concerns when they've got somebody with a submachine gun walking through their hallway. So I, I want to be sure that the psychological damage isn't, is-
Considered as well.
Is considered, right. So, and the students are the best persons to express that, so.
Yeah, what makes them feel safe.
Are there students on the task force or committee?
Go ahead.
Trustee Lane, I'm very sensitive to all the concerns you've raised, both in the process aspect of, are we going to get a good, full sample of opinions on this? And then second, the tactical questions you asked about trauma and violence reduction. I have to tell you, we, we are not even at the stage yet to populate the process that we're going to populate, the team. Right now, Dr. Glass, trustee McDonald, and myself, I've met once, and that was about two hours ago, and-
It's pretty bare bones, though.
For about 20 minutes.
It's not really even a committee yet.
It's just a huge topic. I mean, not just, not just nonviolence or mitigating the effects of trauma, but the interface between private security and law enforcement. I mean, it, it's huge, so, I mean, I just, as usual, I have a list of things that I just have to bring out.
And I, I want you to know that I am very, I'm speaking for trustee McDonald, who is the board's voice on the committee, and she can correct me if I'm wrong, but we are both, and we've talked about how sensitive we are to making sure that every board member, and frankly, anyone who counts themselves as part of our community college community, gets a, gets an opportunity to give input. And, and we're actually not there yet. We're, we're going to report out the information and data we've, we've gathered so far. So what we'll probably do is report out what questions we asked on data, what data we received, and then formulate a plan to engage the community and give opportunities for feedback. And that will include as wide a net as we possibly can have.
And prior to engaging the community, we are going to take the information, the questions that they've already asked, because we haven't received that information yet, look at them and see if there's anything that we think that needs to be added to that. So that's kind of where we are.
Are you the only board member?
I thought there were two. Sign, sign this, too.
Yes, but he was not able to attend, because he's not here, so it was, the three of us had a conversation, but that's about as far as we've gotten.
Okay.
But those were some of the things that we discussed, and I don't know, I'm going to give you a copy of this if you want to take a look at it.
All right. Are there any other committee reports? I don't think. Okay, trustee McDonald, are you?
Yep.
You good to go?
I am good to go.
Trustee Lane?
Yep.
All right then. Next item, please.
Request for information and/or future agenda items?
Trustee Lane!
In reading the president's briefing, he mentioned an online student survey by the AFO. So I did want to ask, and maybe we could have a presentation, or maybe you could just update us, President Kevaluna. I don't know what exactly course and department evaluation looks like here. I know people that are adjuncts at different places, and I mentioned one when we were talking. I know that, that some colleges and universities will have departmental reviews, you have students that will evaluate, you have external evaluation, so I, I don't know what we're doing, but I, I feel that I should know better, how we look at classes, how we look at departments, and evaluate whether they're cutting it or not. I mean, are they, are they, you know, are we using best practices to, for evaluation?
That's a-
And analysis, just, you know, I mean, from the individual student, individual professor level up to, and I, I'm sure that's Dr. Gunko's specialty, so she could probably present on that. But I don't feel that, I mean, I, I know some of it, but I don't feel like I've got a broad-
Yeah, we've had presentations way in the past, but things have changed.
Right.
People have changed, so there's probably- People have changed, so there's probably...
So I think we always need to look at what we're doing now, so.
What I would propose is, either next board meeting, or, so either April or May, you'd give me an opportunity to prepare someone, either myself or one of my teammates, to give a presentation to the board on those questions.
Certainly. Yeah. That would be timely.
I mean, it doesn't have to be next week.
Right.
I mean, it could be future if you have something else.
Does anybody else have a request? All right, then. Next, please.
Board member commentary.
I just, oh, trustee Lane? No, 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 go ahead. Well, I just really quickly wanted to just piggyback on President Cavalluna's there. I went to the Dingle visitation. I wasn't able to attend the funeral, although I caught some of it on television. But I did see the family. I do know Debbie personally. I've had interaction with her over the years. And I will say, it was well-attended by the community at large, and, which really showed the impact that Congressman Dingle had, and that his wife currently has as well with the community. So I believe we all have expressed our deepest condolences to the family. And it's a, it's a long, arduous process, but Debbie's already been out in the community, has attended several functions over the weekend, quite frankly. And it's her spirit that will keep his spirit alive in the community and what they've done for us. So I just wanted to share that. Trustee Lane?
Well, I want to get further feedback from President Cavalluna in the future. Probably, we, none of us maybe know yet. I know you know more than I know. But I watched the governor's state of the state, and things are changing a little bit. Of course, there's a change, and then there's a change of the change.
Pushback.
Change of the change. But most noteworthy for us at the college is her proposal on community colleges.
For all?
For all, right. And for a long time, some of us have thought that we've been falling behind on education. Really, high school, or schooling up till age 16, and then you can exit? Who can, who can live with that? We should be requiring age 18 here. We're terribly falling behind. I think I heard that we're 50th in educational funding increases, but we're certainly in, we're not cutting it educationally. State Superintendent Brian Wiston was, that was one of his major issues to work on. So I hope that Governor Whitmer will be able to do that. It would be something that would bring real excitement to education. I mean, I'd love to see every student, because I think every young person should at least be here getting post-high school training. They're going to need that for their long careers that they're working. So that, I think, we...